All right, good evening. So, how we doing? I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna call tonight's Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Could y'all please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, got a crowd again. Ask and ye shall receive, right?
Yes.
So is there anybody here for anything that is not currently on our agenda this evening? Seeing as none, um, I'm going to move forward with, uh, our second round of budget discussion cuts, um, well, budget discussions.
Uh, excuse me, can we do the first few items first because I have people here?
Oh, you do?
Yeah, we do have an agenda.
I'm not even following the agenda. All right, I guess that I have to follow the agenda. Thank you Suzanne, I get a little out of control. First one is a class two liquor license?
No.
Class two, I'm sorry, class two license. I got booze on the brain. Anybody wanna go drinking? St. Patty's Day? Well, uh, class two license for, I'm not even gonna try that, all-around auto sales?
Reveler.
Thank you. Uh, I'm assuming you're here? If you wouldn't mind stepping up, please. Come on up.
In your packet is the application. This is, is actually a new license because it's a new location, but, um, he has had a license in the past.
Good.
Uh, again, it's just so that he can, uh, access, um, auction houses.
Okay.
He won't be doing business out of his home. And I did have the, uh, building inspector look at it and, uh, he is restricted to two cars, but he's not to, um, advertise, you know, what is it? Post them for sale.
Post them for sale for property.
Okay.
All right.
So, there's been no issues with his license before?
No.
All right. I don't really have any. Seems pretty straightforward. Anybody have any questions for this?
No.
None at all? It's gonna be easy for ya.
Great.
So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Made by Dave, seconded by Tim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Do you want me to mail it for you?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, sorry, thank you.
You can blame it on me, everybody does. Item two is an appointment to economic development for McNeil.
In your packet is, uh, application for Luke McNeil for an opening in the, uh, Economic Development Commission. This opening was, um, actually, um, Eric Chamberlain was on the board. He is going to be moving, which is opening it up. So Mr. McNeil, um, has put in his application. The board has supported his appointment. So if you do appoint, please appoint for a term ending June 30th, 2021.
All right. What's your first name, I'm sorry?
Luke.
Luke? Well, first of all, Luke, thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
Uh, always happy to have somebody else on, uh, on any one of our committees. So volunteerism's been scarce lately, so definitely happy to have you.
Cool.
So what made you wanna get into economic development on that committee?
I wanna see how the machine works and what we can do to bring some money into the town so that you don't have to take it from me.
The machine's not working too well lately.
Well...
Self-interest is the big motivator.
It's the only motivator.
Do you wanna hear something interesting?
Sure.
He and his wife are both applying for, uh, his wife is on another committee. Check the address out. Mitch Cohen's old house.
Oh, really? You want a job as like the...
Those are bigger smiles than I've seen around town where I mention Mitch Cohen.
You're in Mitch's old house. So that means you're gonna be an active member of town meeting then?
We'll see.
All right.
Make a motion to approve or to appoint Mr. McNeil to the position of Economic Development Committee, uh, for a term ending, so Suzanne, you had it?
June 30th, 2021.
2024.
Second.
Made by Tim, seconded by Dave. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Rip it right through here now. Uh, the Beagle Club liquor license, change of officers.
This is a, uh, yearly, um, exercise that they have to do as a club. Uh, they do vote every year at their annual town meeting to change their officers and when they do that, they need to notify A, B, C, C. So that's basically what this is.
Is there anybody from Beagle here?
Probably not. I told them they don't really need to be here for this.
All right. I'll entertain a motion if anyone has one. So moved.
Second.
Made by Hal, seconded by Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Welcome. Which brings us to a new common vic license for the Socal Club.
And this is the common vic license application for the Socal Club. Um, I just need an approval.
Anybody from the Socal here?
No.
So I move that we approved the common vic license for the Socal.
Second.
Made by Mike, hastily seconded by Dave. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Yep.
I'm done.
All right. Brings us to item five, which is review the warrant for COLA compensation schedule, general bylaw regarding private roads and a prop two-and-a-half override question.
Well, we're, we're at your disposal, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have our spreadsheet with us. I think what we would hope would come out of this meeting tonight is some guidance from the board as to decisions made on the overall framework of the budget. We would like to be able to publish the document to the public so that all the moving parts are settled and people can see where...
Oh, I got it.
Where all the allocations have been made. That budget request from all the department heads is already, it's already been submitted, it's already been circulated to you, and it's just a matter now of filling in those, those variable items or taking things out. So we have the capacity to run whatever what-if scenario as if, as long as everybody bears with me and make sure I type it all properly as we go along. The other issue that I wanna speak to at some length is the proposed general bylaw amendment for private roads, when it's appropriate to talk about that.
Okay.
At this point, you know, you asked if we could run a budget scenario where the town actually did provide, uh, proposition two-and-a-half override and what would be the dollar amount that would not only allow the town to preserve its services but would get us the budget flexibility to do the things that a healthy municipal corporation does, which is replace all of the capital items on a proper schedule, not waiting for things to break down before they're replaced, um, be able to compete as an employer because we do have to recruit for different positions over the next couple of years and if we treat them, different classes of employees differently, we run into some difficulty with morale and with recruiting new people. And, um, being able to fund the schools, maybe not at the level of increase that they would prefer, but at least, you know, the preliminary budget that was discussed actually was a cut of $200,000. So what level of override would bring us to the point where we might be able to actually have some year-over-year increase? So, we, we took a stab at it at $1.5 million. The result of that was that you would be able to balance the budget for the next five years, invest in capital. We would still have to do, we would still have a plan in place to save money. We would still have to do some pretty significant things in terms of health benefits for town employees. We would not be able to hire, even if we felt we needed to hire, we would not be hiring any staff except there would be discussion about that one position, the facilities manager for our buildings and our grounds. And right now we have an allocation of a person half-time and it's really stretching that person thin, whereas many, many hats for the town is a, a significant part of our highway department. We take him away from plowing snow to be here, uh, there's just too many balls in the air for that individual. So that's the only hire we would contemplate for the next five years. Raising the school budget 1% every year, keeping the library open, uh, not regionalizing dispatch. We might do some things with dispatch, but at a better pace for us to find an appropriate partner that would allow us to continue to do the things with the recruiting cycle and the police department that we have benefited from to this point. So that's, that we ran that scenario and prepared to show it and prepared to show anything that you or members of, interested members of the public wanna see.
All right. I mean, I kinda wanted to delve into it a little bit. It's that, you know, the last meeting that we'd had and we had discussions and, um, looking at the current budget situation that it was, there was a large outcry from multitudes of people regarding like the concept of closing the library. There was some discussions of a à la carte based override question that was putting out there and, um, I listened and I know I initially wasn't a huge advocate of, of a two-and-a-half override considering its track record and history within the town. But I don't think that we'd be responsible as elected officials not to at least provide the legislative body or town meeting options. My proponent, you know, my thought, and obviously it's not all up to me, it's up to this board, the folks that are here, is there's a A or a B scenario. My mind, the A scenario is we do a, or propose a $1.5 million prop two-and-a-half override, which as Matt alluded to, is gonna balance our budget out over the next five years. We're not taking services away from the town, but we're also not doing any drastic augmentation either. It's kinda, let's keep the ship afloat and, and move along and give the board time, breathing room and pressure off of our back to try and focus on political pressure towards pilot program, alternate means of bringing in revenue into the town, um, whatever that may be, um, modest adjustments to health insurance to get us more in line with what the rest of the valley's doing, that also cost savings opportunities. Obviously, the option B is, you know, the budget that we tossed around on a spreadsheet last week and the week before. And the caution that I give to people is that every way I tore the budget apart, looking at a no override, no supplemental revenue that comes in through an override, we'd be okay 2019. There'd be more cuts coming in 2020, and if you look further down to 2021, we can't make payroll. That's where we set. And you can't do small precision cuts anymore because there's no small precision cuts to be had. So I mean, that's, if, you could throw the spreadsheet up based off of the original number to where, I just ask people to take a good look at the red that sits in, without the two-and-a-half override being implemented, particularly, like I said, 2020, 2021. Is that with the override number, Matt? Oh, no.
That's with the override number in it?
Yep.
And if you want me to turn that off, I've got a lot of other assumptions changed.
Yeah, could you back the two-and-a-half override out in the event that it fails?
Bear with me. If you've got something else to say, it'll take me about five minutes.
So, some of my large reasonings on not necessarily being a proponent of à la carte or a menu-driven, uh, override is I think it turns it a little convoluted. Um, it's a matter of you're only kicking the can down the road for a year. If all other opportunities failed and it was just for the library, we'd be sitting at this table again next year having the same discussion. Um, it's, I kinda looked at it more of, we're either gonna succeed as a community or we're gonna fail as a community and that's kinda the way that it looks. It's, no one department or resource or service that's offered to the town is drastically more important than another service to the town. And if you wanna vote towards, there's a modest increase in your taxes, but it means that for the next five years, we're not having difficult decisions like this and having to sit down, look at the community in general and say, "I have to take a service away from you." So, that's kinda where we, where my head was sitting at on it. And like I said, I'm not the end-all, be-all, but I spent quite a few hours tearing this apart trying to figure out the easiest and most palatable means to present this to the public for a voting. And that's without the override number?
So then, remember we talked about not really contributing very much to OPEB? So you're just about 750 short. Even if you close the library, you're 500,000 short. And if you regionalize dispatch, it has a, an immediate gain that is eventually offset by the cost. So you, you would pay, you would pay whatever community is hosting the regional dispatch effort. There would be a fee associated with doing that. So it's not a pure savings, you're not just cutting four people and getting all the benefit of the services from that other town. We would lose four employees, but we would also have to pay roughly the equivalent of two people, uh, in order to benefit from that service. And then because we use sworn police officers in our dispatch who backfill overtime shifts when our police officers go on vacation in the summer, if you didn't have that resource anymore, you would be using your existing group of officers, so your overtime expense would grow. So, there is some savings from regionalizing police dispatch, but it is not a lot of money. But we put it on the table because really that was the next largest bucket of savings we could imagine, uh, being able to get. So where does that put us? See if, make sure everybody can see what I can see. Those, if there are funding gaps there, so those numbers, they don't really show up as bright red for you guys, but there's one number there in parentheses, the first number is 504,427. All of that would have to be covered with free cash in order to balance the budget. So if we put, cursor is microscopic on this computer, but if I just plug in 500,000 in free cash, you see the deficit goes down to about 4,000 bucks. Now, we can probably find $4,000 to bring that to zero. That...
One moment, just let him finish, Brad.
That, yeah, that, that long-term dependency on free cash would only grow and free cash is the place where you fund your capital budget. So to the extent that you wanna buy an ambulance or improve a building so that it is functional for the public, um, those funds would not be available if you're using them to make the operating budget balance. And that's the formula for short-term success and medium-to-long-term failure, significant failure, uh, of the, of the town's budget. Because it just, free cash, you can't even assume that it's gonna be there next year. Uh, there are a great many things that happen. We, we try to be very conservative in estimating revenues. So if the revenues come in higher than we expected, that a little bit, that, that bleeds over to free cash and it's available for other things. But if our revenue targets are spot-on, then it won't flow to free cash. If we don't save money in operations, it doesn't flow to free cash. So that it, you can't necessarily say, three years from now, I know I'll have 700,000 to balance the budget because there's absolutely no guarantee of that, uh, being there. We know this year what we have certified for this year. We also know what the challenges are this year. It seems like we're not praying hard enough because it just keeps snowing. But that's a, that's a deficit account that you'll find out later on this evening, it's already a substantial amount of money.
You have a question, Brett?
Yeah, Brett Ogles, three rounds, by the way. Um, the scenario presented on the board right now is that level service for the town or is that some iteration that you guys have been working on?
I think, well, no, it's not level service because it includes closing the library.
Well, on the board right now, okay. Does it also include the 200,000 reduction from...
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Yes.
Which again, I just wanted to make a note that that's actually a $650,000 reduction from what...
From the request.
For this year, or a level service budget.
Thanks, Brett.
Thank you.
So, at least, it's in black and white and red, so you can see where we came to it. And I have been responding to some posts that have been sitting on social media, um, trying to dispel the idea that, you know, this board or anybody that's involved in local or town government has any desire to close a library or take any service away from the community. We don't. Our goal is to try and give you guys the most amount of services that we can offer to you that are of value to you and still manage to balance a budget at the end of the year. And as you can see, the revenue and the, and the level of service just don't match and it's been this way for quite some time. Yes, sir?
My name is Dennis Salatiel and, uh...
Street?
Pardon?
What street?
22 Castle Court.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, my question is, you said your, um, your A plan, uh, would have a modest increase in homeowners', uh, taxation. Can you be more specific, be more, you know, defining as far as your average increase you expect?
That's with the override we're talking now.
Yes.
You have a microphone?
Go ahead, you can take the microphone off.
It'll reach you, Jean.
Um, we did run the scenario of $1.5 million for an override, using the average single family home with a value of $296,100. The current tax rate is 16.07. The new tax rate would be 17.60. That would be an increase of 4,53.03, $453.
Annually?
Annually.
Annually, yeah.
And again, that's based on the average, which is $296,100.
I understand, thank you.
Yes, sir?
Do you have any examples of towns that ran out of money? What happens if LOLs?
LOL? Go ahead, Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rich Bowen, Town Council. What happens can depend on the degree of, um, the deficit. Now certainly places like Chelsea, I think LOL, Springfield, uh, ran into tremendous fiscal problems and in those cases, a receiver was brought in. Typically though, what happens is that if you're not able to balance your budget, and that's basically what running out of money means, if you're not able to balance your budget, um, the Department of Revenue will step in, um, and it will force you to send estimated tax bills and short-term borrow to make up revenue. Uh, it will not approve the certification of a tax rate until you have a balanced budget. Now, I've done work with communities where they haven't had a certified tax rate because of a structural deficit and it's gone on for a period of months. And eventually through a series of all kinds of cuts, uh, things have been put into balance to the point that the Department of Revenue would allow the municipality to continue to function. So, on one hand, it's not as if on June 30th, the last person leaving the building will be turning out all the lights. The, um, pain will probably come in within three to six months after that as the Department of Revenue begins to, well, I'll have to put it this way, tighten the screws for the town to get its budget into balance.
But we would still have cops and firemen, would LOL have a library? Like, what does bankruptcy actually look like for it right now?
With your permission, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, absolutely.
I can only recall one instance of municipal bankruptcy in the Commonwealth and, and I hope the citizens of New Braintree will forgive me if, if I'm mis-sighting the case, but I think it was in New Braintree and I think it was maybe about 20 years ago or so. So bankruptcy is probably not the route that you would be heading towards. If you got into a situation of bankruptcy however, or even a state mandated receivership, uh, at that point, all local control over the operation of government ceases. So, for example, your question is what would happen with the police force? What would the level of staffing be? Would there be patrol cars? Those are questions that can't be answered. Uh, those are questions that would not be answered by the Board of Selectmen or the town administrator or by town meeting or by any of you. It's because in that kinda circum, that kinda dire circumstance, the state is going to come in with its receiver and the receiver is going to be telling all of us what services will be provided, uh, who will be working, who won't be working.
But...
Isn't, uh, receivership what got flint into the Massachusetts in? When that a receiver returned the water from one source to the other? So it doesn't necessarily, it's gotta vote poorly, very poorly.
He's asking whether that's what happened to Flint.
I think the, um, the underlying thing is the fact that it takes any say or voice that the town itself would have over its destiny and to what services we can provide is completely out of our hands. In essence, there is no local government, there's no local legislative body. All determinations and services that are provided from the school system down to your police and fire are determined by the Commonwealth. And what they feel is necessary and what they feel isn't.
I, I worked for a city that declared bankruptcy. And we came in and precisely, we were only in office for a couple of weeks when the phone rang one Friday and it was schoolteachers calling from the line at the credit union, "They won't cash my check." And so we failed to meet payroll and the state instantly set about an overseer. You do lose all open control. And if you ever wanna see a meeting at Bedlam, you can watch the Budget Commission meetings in City of One Socket with 200, 300 people in City Hall. And they weren't allowed to speak and they were just there to observe the decisions that were gonna be made. Now, it all depends on where you think you are. I mean, if you have 147 firefighters and your city is bankrupt, you're probably gonna look at shift strength around 90. And a lot of those people were browned out or, you know, vacancies were not filled, a lot of those things. But if you don't have that kind of fat in your budget, then they just cut services. And the thing that's very important, they do two things. They do a five-year budget, they balance that budget in one lump sum tax. In One Socket, it was a 25% supplemental tax bill. And it's a community that was already very, very high tax rate and was already a very poor city. So you really, but there was no mercy in that process and the chairman was Bill Suquino, who was the town manager from East Greenwich, and he wasn't hearing it. It's just the gavel came down and that was it, the bill that sent out. And it's the same tax as any other tax. If you don't pay it, you go to tax lien. And it was a very, very painful, very, very difficult thing for residents to go through receivership. There is no, other examples from that state would be the city of Central Falls at the same time. But they had a, pardon me, a local pension plan. So you had firefighters who had worked their whole lives, got a $25,000 a year pension, and the receiver said, "12-5, take it or leave it." So that's, but you don't have a private pension plan and the bills keep coming in. So to the extent that you have employees that are on duty and the Worcester County pension plan is still gonna send you the bill for that year's contribution and you have to pay it. It's a, it's a legal claim.
All right. And can you roll back over with the override assumptions then?
Okay.
Just out of curiosity, Rich, can the Commonwealth come in in receivership and increase taxes beyond the two-and-a-half percent limit?
It's possible. Remember, the prop two, two-and-a-half law is just a piece of state legislation. It's not, as you know, uh, not part of the Constitution. It's not something that's bedrock, unchangeable. So it's theoretically possible that if the Commonwealth felt that some change in the tax laws was necessary, the Commonwealth has the power to do it.
A lot of it was based on assumption that the local municipal government was still in control anyway.
Yeah.
Is that better? No. They only go into the TV. I'll try and talk louder.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. Sorry. All right.
So you had a question, I heard the, the two-and-a-half?
Yep. I just wanted to reflect the numbers based... I just wanted to reflect the numbers based off of, we successfully passed a 2.5 override, and what the five-year forecast looks like at that point.
Just a comment, you mentioned earlier, I'm sorry, you brought on, you mentioned earlier the core track record on Prop 2.5 overrides. So, I just wanted to note that we tried in 2013, it lost 4 to 1. Tried again in 2016, it only lost 2 to 1. Considerable ground over time, as the budget situation continued to deteriorate over three years. We've continued to deteriorate some more in the last two years, so...
Agreed.
It's starting to come around to some folks, and, you know, there was some progress made between the two overrides.
There was, I agree.
2 to 1 still a bad loss, but...
Is there such a thing as a good loss, really?
Moral victory.
Yeah.
With all the assumptions, change back, this is where you are.
I like it a lot better, there's no red, well, very little red, anyway, or at least it's easily...
Five digits of red is something that we could manage through. It's a minor change, either in increasing free cash or decreasing the contribution to OPEB or operational savings at that point.
Or a good winter.
Or a good, well, we don't really, we don't really budget winters.
Yeah, this doesn't factor into a winter. I mean, we have this at 155 now?
We brought it up to 155 because we anticipate a rate increase. If we don't pay a competitive rate compared to the communities around us, we won't get the good plow operators. We don't want to go ahead of anybody, but we don't want to be too far below them.
Sit in the middle.
No.
You have a question, sir?
Yes, Dennis Salatiel again. What happens after five years? If you, if this override goes through, what happens after five years? Is this override a permit, would this be permanent, or would this, would you need additional increases after five years?
It, that's a variable. What we're trying to, at least at this point in time, and it's a good question, is at least get us to a five-year forecastable budget that shows balanced or well within, or easily balanced on our side. Understanding that there's contingencies that you can't forecast, like the school gets a special education cost of $3.5 million for a family of students or a particular student, that's something you can't budget, too. We would, I think the model moving forward, at least while I'm on the board, would be to continue to forecast five-year budgets. In the process, our hopes are, we found alternate revenue streams, be it recreational marijuana, or a power plant, or industry comes into town, that we've been successful in applying enough political pressure to have them reformulate the pilot agreement between ourselves and Those two things alone, or any one of those things that hits, obviously will extend this budget out further past that, but I think we're going to perpetually be running off of a five-year rolling average, or trying to keep a five-year budget rolling, moving forward.
There will be changes in your experience as a taxpayer, though. So, in 2023, you have a debt exclusion that's going to roll off, and the next one is in 2026. So, over a period of time, there will be, your rate is going to diminish, actually, after, if you were to vote an override this year, in 2023, your rate would go down unless you voted another exclusion, but that's how it would work, and the, we're going to roll off, what, $400,000 a year in debt service in 2023.
I just want to be clear, the information I gave earlier was based on the current FY18 information.
Yeah. I'm sorry?
John Fontaine, 25 Charles Street. The new tax rate is 17.6. Has anyone looked at how that compares with other areas of town? Are still, is it a little higher than ours?
The tax rate isn't what counts, it's the, the average tax bill, and we, I haven't done it this time. We have done it in previous override attempts, and we did have that information available. And I believe, Brett, we were below the average at that point.
Right, yeah.
So, it's not just the tax rate, because, you know, you have to take into the value of the town as well.
Go ahead, Brett.
Oh, I can't recognize you.
Go ahead, Brett.
For instance, Sutton may have a lower tax rate than us, but their valuations tend to be a bit higher than us, so their average tax bill is probably higher than ours on the average tax rate. So, if you just look at the rate, and say, oh, we have a higher tax rate, and I don't know if that's true right now, but that may be the case. So, you may say, okay, a town has a lower tax rate than us, but their bill is actually $500 higher than our average bill. So, that's what Jean's worried about, you can't necessarily look at just the tax rate, because of the way the valuation is factored into it as well.
Anything from the board?
Do we have a consensus that the board would support it, the 2.5?
I would.
Yeah.
So, but I'm just one guy.
Yeah. I think...
I don't think we have a choice. I think, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's our responsibility to give people choices. And, you know, we've seen what the budget looks like without an override, so it's pretty clear what we're going to have to do. I think we need to give folks a choice. So, yeah, I'm supportive of putting an override question on the ballot.
Okay. Lisa back there.
Lisa Malzinski, 60 Oak Street. Unless you've already covered this, can you explain the mechanics of the timing, since it's sort of my understanding that we would have to vote on this warrant article for an override at Town Meeting, and then the next day, would you, would we have this on the ballot? Would we have to vote twice? Can you just explain the mechanics?
I'm going to defer to Town Council.
You are?
Yep.
That's right. Not for amplification, is it?
Correct.
So, you've got, I'm going to stand up, I've been sitting all day, anyway. You've got a couple of things in play. In terms of, how does something get on the ballot? The statute that you want to take a look at is Chapter 59, Section 21(c). And that's Proposition 2.5, so-called, that's where it's all based. Now, the way something gets on a ballot is that the Board of Selectmen votes to put the matter on the ballot. Now, when does it go on the ballot? That really is a question of when the Board of Selectmen decides that it wants to have the ballot question presented to the public. And I don't want to presume anything, but perhaps the timing would be such that it could go on the annual town election ballot. I'm not sure of that. That's something that would have to be reviewed with Madam Town Clerk. You certainly have the option of a special election. But the process of putting something on the ballot is separate from Town Meeting, that's something that's in the hands of the Board of Selectmen, and the timing is controlled by them. Okay, now, just put that all in the back of your head for a minute. Here's the other half of it. Town Meeting is the body that actually appropriates money. The Selectmen don't appropriate money. The Selectmen propose, Town Meeting disposes. That means that Town Meeting would have to vote an appropriation of either, do you have it categorized as A or B? I think it is. Town Meeting would vote for A or B. Typically, the way this sort of thing is done in municipal government is that two budgets are proposed, a, I'll call it a base budget, a budget that presupposes no Proposition 2.5 involvement whatsoever, and that budget typically includes whatever cuts are needed to come up with a balanced budget. So, that's one budget that would be proposed at Town Meeting. There would be an alternate budget proposed at Town Meeting, the Proposition 2.5 contingent vote budget. And typically, what happens is you will vote a base budget, and then there will be a menu with certain increases shown contingent on the passage of Proposition 2.5 at the ballot. Now, let's say for the sake of discussion that Town Meeting voted for a contingent Proposition 2.5 budget. What that would mean is that a base budget is in place, one that includes the cuts and the, whatever you can afford to keep things running. Then you also would have this contingent budget approved, the budget that would be supplemental, that would take effect if the ballot question was approved. So, if the ballot is approved, then those extra numbers kick in, and the baseline items get supplemented. Okay, now, let's return back to the question of the ballot. I assume that if, well, I would, I forget the assumption, let's just keep it where we are. The Selectmen vote to put a Prop 2.5 ballot question on the ballot, it's in front of the voters, requires a majority vote by the voters. That can be voted on, I think it's under Chapter 59, Section 21(c) subsection, and at any time up to and including September 15th, if the contingent vote is adopted at an annual Town Meeting. And I think that's where this would arrive. So, you're talking September 15th to have an election. So, if the Selectmen put it on the ballot at any time up to September 15th, and if the voters by a majority vote approve, the contingent appropriation kicks in. So, those are the roles of the different bodies, the Selectmen, putting the ballot question on the ballot, that's not a Town Meeting vote, Town Meeting approving a base budget, and Town Meeting, if it so chooses, adopting a contingent budget. Now, what happens if Town Meeting doesn't adopt a contingent budget? Town Meeting could well say, no, we're not interested in a Prop 2.5 override, we're not going to vote for the chance of one, we're going to vote down this contingent budget. That is a possibility, and what would happen is, the ballot question would still be on the ballot, the people could still approve a Prop 2.5 override by voting at the ballot. However, until Town Meeting actually appropriated any supplemental funds, that ballot question wouldn't have any effect. So, you could theoretically have yet another Town Meeting before September 15th and take another crack at a different supplemental budget. Now, I realize I'm probably complicating it a bit at this point, just to bring it back down to the simpler version, you vote a base budget, if you vote, a contingent budget, and then if the Selectmen put a ballot question on the ballot, and if a majority of the people who vote, vote for the ballot question, the contingent supplemental budget kicks in. Thank you.
Richard, that scenario, just to clarify, we have until September 15th?
To hold an election.
To hold the election.
Yes, yes, sir.
But that would be an issue from a fiscal standpoint?
Yes.
Because you couldn't afford to keep the library open during that period of time, and you can't close it and then reopen it.
No, but you could budget, preload the budget a little bit to get you through.
Well, you'd be looking at even, you'd have to cut somewhere else at that point, because you're spending money.
That you don't have.
Right.
Why wouldn't you have it in May or June, the election?
Well...
I don't know.
Rather than to drag it out for three months, knowing what's not, what's going on.
I guess that's just a potential deadline, if there's no reason why.
I would think we'd have it as soon as possible.
Before the town fiscal year began.
If it's the will of the board, though, to see this pass, I just caution everyone to remind you that we tried the same thing in 13 and 16, and we know the definition of insanity. All it takes is, you know, misinformation getting out early before pro people are organized and getting ready to go door-to-door, phone calls, the real work that it takes to move something like this. I don't know if a special election is the answer, I just know that things have to gear up really quick for it to be successful.
I think it's one of those things that it's going to, it really does come down, it's just the will of the people. I mean, we've done everything humanly possible to try and get the explanation of the budget that's out there, the people that chose to be involved have been involved, the people that are going to vote, no, we're going to vote, no, regardless of what you say to them. And I just, to me, I just don't see time as our ally anymore. I think it's more of our enemy. And I think if the board is willing to move forward on a 2.5 override, I'd propose that you put it on the next available election, and hope for the best.
Do we have time to put it on the ballot for the...
That's a Chris Burnout question.
Okay. Thank you.
I would think so. We haven't seen, I guess that comes from Chris.
Sorry, can you speak up, please? We can't hear in the back, please?
Yes.
Is there, because I don't believe the ballot's been printed, because things haven't been finalized, so that, would that be the major stumbling block, or is there some state law that requires extra time from when we decide to when it can get on the ballot?
With your permission, Mr. Chairman, the question that the Selectmen uses raised is, you know, are there electoral difficulties that would prevent the Board of Selectmen from putting the question on the annual town ballot? I have to say that I have not had an opportunity to speak with the Town Clerk on that ordinarily before any election. You need a certain number of days to accomplish particular things, including voter registration, printing of ballots, voter challenges, transmitting absentee ballots, and receiving absentee ballots, and that takes a set amount of time. The number, I was saying earlier, I thought it was 54 springs to mind, but please don't hold me to that exact number. What is relevant here, though, and something that we will have to talk with the Town Clerk about, is that with the annual election, if that was the direction that the question was going to go in, we already have an election coming up, we already have voter registration going on right now, we already have voter challenges going on right now. So, in other words, everything that you would have to do to have an election, to vote on a Prop 2.5 ballot question, is happening anyway. So, the question for Madam Clerk that we'll probably put to her tomorrow will be, can we tag this ballot question on, is there enough time under electoral law to tag this ballot question on to the already existing ballot for the upcoming election? And as we know, because the caucuses are still determining who their candidates are going to be, the ballots haven't been printed. Ballots probably won't be printed until, well, the caucuses had to have info in, and papers had to be in by the...
End of this month?
April 3rd or so.
I think that's the date.
Yeah, so obviously, any ballot printing would take place after that date. So, from a practical point of view, there's enough time. I think we just need to talk to the Town Clerk to see if it can be pinned down.
Jean, could you speak to the impact of a failed override to the bond reading?
I did have a conversation with our financial advisor last Thursday after Selectman Bonin's question about, that Justin posed, you know, why can't we have an override on every year? And it is not viewed as a positive thing to have an override on and then fail. However, this year is a little unique in its circumstance, because if the override is not on the ballot, and it does not pass, then the library closes. Because of some other extraordinary circumstances for Douglas, we have school choice out going up, we have BBT going up, so the bonding agency may look at the whole story and say, okay, the library closed this year, but these other things continue to increase, which means what's coming next year? There's no additional revenue, so what's going to be cut the following year? That would impact the bond rating, is when we have further cuts. And so, I think you can't look at it just in this piece, you have to look at the full story, and look at the other indicators as well. This isn't, this isn't about the library anymore. I think the library is a symptom to the problem, I talked to the fire chief about that today. We have other things that will be affected, it's just the library is forefront right now.
Have a question back there.
Chris Fontaine, Charles Street. Does anybody remember the failed 2.5 overrides, if the Board of Selectmen recommended and supported it, and would this board recommend and support a, an override?
We clearly recommended and supported the override in 2016, 100% unanimously. Some, I'm not sure if that was the case in 2013.
I think it was. Was it? I believe it was, yeah.
I didn't support it in 2013.
I was there until the very end. All of us wrote what I thought were excellent letters to the community, explaining what would happen. I'm pretty certain that every one of our letters could be dusted off and put in people's hands by the end of the week, because things really haven't changed.
Have gotten worse?
Yeah.
But to answer the second part, I can't speak for the whole board, but I would support, obviously, I'm proposing it, so I would support a 2.5 override if it hits the ballot.
obviously, I'm proposing it, so I would support a 2 and 1/2 override if it hits the ballot this year, if it's the will of the rest of the board.
Just to be clear, I'd supported the 16 override.
I supported the 16, and I'd certainly support one at this point.
Looks like everybody's pretty much on board.
Yeah, I supported 16 too, and I don't see another choice.
Of course, we weren't so persuasive in the past having that, but we all have to roll up our sleeves to get it through.
All right.
Well, it will absolutely take work, and it has to gear up quick. So those in the community that are inclined to do that, my recommendation is, let's start early, very early, tomorrow.
Rebecca LaValle, Northwest Maine.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Rebecca LaValle, Northwest Maine.
If the override had passed in 2016, I know it's kind of hard to say, what would we be, what would our situation be today?
We wouldn't be here.
At all. No, I mean...
Having this discussion.
So, I think it's kind of hard to forecast that.
I know that, but I'm like...
So, I mean, eventually, override goes through or not, unless revenue circumstances change, pilot changes, there's a lot of factors that still need to be put in, and this board still has a lot of work to do to try and make that happen. But the 2016 override, no, we wouldn't be having a conversation right now about closing a library. I don't think that the numbers that you see in red would be quite as deep into the red as they are, and I don't think that we'd be having the challenges that we are trying to balance the budget. I know that it was expressed pretty loud and clear to the community that this is where we were going to end up, and, you know, nobody likes to be right, especially not in circumstances like this.
So, I think there would still be some deficit just in off where we are.
There would be. As long as the state continues to underfund pilot, there's going to be a revenue problem. So...
Can you make the assumption that we would be in 2021-ish?
Yes and no. I mean, what a manager is going to tell you is that all the savings initiatives that occurred from 2016 to present may not have happened if there wasn't so much budget pressure to accomplish them. Because you can't know what decisions people would have made. It's our responsibility to tell you when we think we just can't squeeze any more blood out of the stone. When you look at the accounts that are growing more rapidly than others, the first question you ask yourself is, how much control does the town have over that growing account? So this year, the assessment for Blackstone Valley Tech is up 27.8 percent, or $243,000 increase. Do we control that? Maybe in some very theoretical way, there's a democracy somewhere in that setup with 13 towns and a, I don't know how many people can even name Douglas's representative to that council. Another account that's growing very rapidly is your pension. Again, I think we talked about this last time, it's one of my pet peeves as a middle-aged man, that I'm paying for the promises that people in prior generations made to workers without funding the account. And that's horrible, because now we're playing catch-up. So instead of having an annual contribution to the pension fund that's a manageable sum, and it's going into a trust that has grown through investment over many years, it's only 43 percent funded. So not only are you paying that annual amount, you're paying an extra amount to cover that. Now, I don't know if Massachusetts has done one of these, have you done a pension case yet? The other New England states that have, have considered those pension promises to be contracts. So you cannot legislate your way out of paying that obligation, because you have people who retired on the basis of a promise that was made to them that was valid the day they retired. So that bill will come in no matter what. Health insurance, the town has done, that's probably the next largest growth this year, the town has done extraordinary work to try to reduce its health insurance exposure. So a couple of years ago, you were looking at a 17.9 percent increase from Blue Cross, and the town administrator and Board of Selectmen at that time, and the finance director pulled you out of that plan and put you in a new plan with a high deductible, and it saves 7, 8 percent off of the premium. But as Americans, we all know that health insurance is the issue that's tearing Washington to shreds, because they can't figure it out. We always budget a year-over-year estimated increase for health insurance of 8 percent, because the healthcare market, costs in healthcare grow up about 8 percent a year. And our premiums reflect the costs of our claims. So those, unless you can change those major items, and the other one is school bus transportation, which if I scroll up, next year is up 13.6 percent. There are many different moving parts to that, but the two major ones are your regular bus transportation and your special education bus transportation. That latter account depends who's in the system, who needs out of district placement, and how we get them there. So one student who needs to go a pretty significant distance, multiple days during the week, you know, there's a certain amount of specialty involvement with that, so this year, special ed, you hate it when I pull numbers out of my head, but it's going to be around 36 percent in the year we're in. So we're running a deficit for special education transportation of about $53,000 this year. The regular school bus contract, which is, you know, big yellow wagons, is up whatever, 5, 5.9 percent. If we could get control of a piece of that, and this budget assumes, even with the override, that this whole group and the school committee are going to work together to try to get some control over the growth in the school transportation budget. Because at a 13.6 percent increase, I do the quick math in my head, it's $160,000. So those are the primary movers in your budget, and if you don't get control of them, or you can't control them, then there isn't, it's not a spending problem anymore, there aren't decisions being made to go out and hire more people, or buy more on the expense budget. The expense budget in this town is already very, very lean.
And I would add one more to that. The budget for school choice out back in 2017 was $273,000, the budget for 2019 is $437,000. This is a direct bill, so this comes off the top before we get to our side at all, and that's why, you know, we look at those indicators, and that's why I talked to, and Matt alluded to, BBT, Norfolk Aggie, school choice out, those are bills that are given to us, we don't have control over that. Now, had the override passed, and we weren't charging $300 per sport, per family, no family cap, these students may not, I don't know the answer to that. They don't give a reason as they leave the district, but this is now, and I know as a parent, if I had made this decision, I'm not going to pull them back after they've gotten comfortable in their new situation and made friends, and, you know, so that's a danger, and we did speak to this back in 2013, you know, this was one of the indicators we said we would have to watch. And like, the chairman said, we don't want to be right.
Yes, ma'am.
Lauren Colbert, 11 Crescent Lane. The five-year projection model that you have, does that assume similar increases, the ones you were just recently talking about, those five factors, obviously are far above 2 and 1/2 percent increases each, those same percentage increases are reflected for the next five years in that?
So the two big things that will have to happen is, one, get some kind of control over school transportation, as I mentioned. Secondly, we hope for the better part of human nature to prevail upon the superintendent of BBT. Why is everybody laughing? So you got about 5.7 percent of the high school age population in the catchment area, it's from Douglas, but you have 7.8 percent of the student body at BBT. You're about 50 percent over what their own written admissions policy says was their target. So rather than get crazy with this and try to, you know, fight a political fight with a guy like that, with the following he's got, just simply say, if the deal is simply that you would stabilize the population you have now for the next five years, so the only increase coming to the town every year is our share of the operational increase that you experience as a district from one year to the next, there's hope that you could make all these numbers work. Insurance, just, I'll go through the last two accounts. Insurance, we really kind of have two options that we could play with on the health insurance side. One would be to increase the deductible with no additional support from the town. That's kind of a harsh thing to do. Our employees have gotten used to the 2,000, 4,000 deductible and the HSA, the health savings account that goes along with that. If you go to 3,600, 3,000, 6,000, you say, we're not going to help you cover that, that's not a real strong play with collective bargaining units. The other would be to say, well, your premium co-share is a little bit lower than the other towns around you, what would happen if you were competitive with them? That, I think, is a fair conversation to have, and my estimate is you'd save about 6 and 1/4 percent. So you've got the possibility of one low year, which I've built into this, we assume we have to do that. On the pension, there is no relief at all, that's going to go up just a little bit shy of 10 percent every year.
In the BBT discussion, you know, for 736 Board of Selectmen's meetings, and 22 FinCom meetings, and 438 town meetings, and the usual spiel that you hear from them, it's not a difficult task to sit in front of the superintendent of BBT and have him say, you're not adhering to your own policy. That's not a difficult conversation to have with him at all. And he's, he's a very large advocate for his district, as he should be, and he's very good at it. I think he's got the best vocational technical high school in the country, as of right now. So he's got a lot of political clout, but when you present to him the mere fact that this is your policy, you wrote it, you have to adhere to it, it's not going to be hard for him to do that. And I don't think that he's so unreasonable that he wouldn't. And I don't have a problem fighting and arguing with him to have him see the light either.
Mr. Chair, he will be attending the Finance Committee on March 26th.
As will I. Yes, sir.
Laura Monju, 20 Depot Street. I've heard a few times tonight about pilot being underfunded, and I'm not really sure what that means, but are there other towns in a similar situation where they have a lot of municipal or lands that they're not going to tax, they, as Douglas, other towns, and go to the state and try to advocate for ourselves?
So, well, the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No.
So the pilot program is state-owned land where they do payments in lieu of taxes. We're not the only town that subscribes to a pilot program, and I do believe others are suffering, but I believe Mr. Bowen has additional information.
I was honored by the flip, though.
You shouldn't have been.
So emerged is one person.
Speak loud, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Here's the situation. All throughout the Commonwealth, the state is a gigantic landholder, and the land that the state holds is land that the communities in which the land is located does not get tax revenue. And, you know, any community that has any kind of state park, any kind of state facility is dealing with the issue of the value of state-owned land. Now, because the percentage of state-owned land in Douglas is very high, that's a lot of tax revenue that you don't get. It's just as simple as that. So how does the state try to address this kind of structural deficit for the communities in which it holds property? Each year, the legislature appropriates a certain amount of money and sets it aside to dole out, according to a very arcane formula, to each of the communities where the state holds land. I have been involved in the course of my 30 years of doing municipal law, in at least two dozen lawsuits at the appellate tax board against the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for purposefully rigging the formula and undervaluing the value of the land that it holds in each community. I can tell you that, well, I have this image of the last one of those cases I tried, where it was little old me coming into the courtroom with my papers, and nine lawyers from the Commonwealth walked in with a caravan of boxes of documents to support their claim. They didn't, by the way. But even if the court says you've got the value of the land all wrong, state, you should have valued it at $100,000 an acre rather than $10,000 an acre, you know, great, you go away, I beat them, that's wonderful, you know, my town is going to get money. Well, guess what? If the legislature doesn't appropriate the money to fund the judgments, if the legislature doesn't appropriate the money to fund the payment in lieu of tax program, the pilot program, you don't get the money. So what happens, and I'm sorry if I sound like a politician, I'm just telling you the way it works. What happens is you've got a pie, and it's not a big pie, and you've got a lot of hungry people, and you can always slice that pie so many different ways. And so maybe this year, because of the hard work of the Board of Selectmen, maybe the Douglas slice gets a little bit bigger, and the slice in Sturbridge maybe gets a little bit smaller, because we got a little more of the pie, and they got a little bit less. That's not the problem. The problem is, the pie just isn't damn big enough. Sorry.
Well, it could have been, she could have sounded like a lawyer.
But there are several other towns in our situation, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
We've actually, I think, opened up discussions with places like Plymouth, where they have a large park, and a few other communities. So we've had discussions with the legislative delegations, I believe, to try to do something in a concerted effort with those communities that are particularly oppressed by the system.
Right, it sounds like we group together as opposed to fighting one another for that little piece of a pie might be the better situation.
Well, if I may. It's an excellent idea, and it's one that I've looked at over the years. But remember who writes the laws. Okay, lawyers, sure, you know, most of those lawyers who write the laws, but remember who really writes the laws. The state writes the laws. And guess what? If the law isn't written in a way that you can bring your claim in a class action, then you don't get to do it. The way the law is written is that if you've got a gripe with the money that the state is giving you as a payment in lieu of tax, you have a certain limited time period within which to file an appeal with the appellate tax board on behalf of your community, no others, and have a trial, bring in those nine lawyers with their caravans of documents, get a decision, and if one side or the other doesn't like it, then it goes to the appeals court, where they look to decide, thumbs up, thumbs down. The state has written the mechanisms of Chapter 58, 58a, and 59, so that it's just you and me, babe, we're the only ones going in, we don't get to bring all our pals, it's just the bunch of us.
To give you an idea of the extent of the deficit, for want of a better term, the state owns, up at the lake or the state park, about 6,000 acres. So think to yourself about how many house lots that would be if it was all developed. Of course, it would never be all developed, but think how many house lots you could get out of that. And thinking that the average tax bill, I know, hovers right around between $4,500 and $5,000, I think, now, am I correct, Jim?
47, yes.
47, yeah. The state paid us in pilot funds last year $190,000 for all 6,000 acres.
In 2018, it was 206,000, I don't want to...
Okay, I was looking, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Around 200,000.
And dad, insult to injury is less money, but they have more land.
Yes.
And that was going to be my next point. They acquired more of our land, the state did, and they paid us less money this year than they did last year.
In '19, it's a decrease, it's down to 185,000.
45,000.
But it's beautiful.
Exactly, yeah, 45,000.
So the last part of this, and it's the most cynical piece, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, if you watch West Wing, or if you're much of a junkie on election night when we have a presidential election, and you see the map, the different colors of the states, and how we're going to elect a president by the number of votes... and how we're going to elect a president by the number of votes. I have been reaching out to many communities that have significant forest, Sterling, Irving, Irving's got a power plant, they couldn't care less, they're building brand-new stuff everywhere. But there's a list of us and we talk back and forth. The thing is, if you took all of our votes and added them up in a statewide election for governor, you're not moving the needle. So no matter how upset we get, we're going to get a lot more done through diplomacy than we could ever do with concerted action, unfortunately.
And as soon as we found the 2019 number, I called our rep, Matt, wrote a letter. I mean, we did react quickly to the fact that we were getting less in 2019 than we were getting in 2018.
What was their response? I can't really do a good cricket sound, but...
All right, so, yes, sir.
Dick Vandenberg, Lemon Street. So I've been in Douglas for about 40 years, and I remember 20, 25 years ago, talk of really working hard to expand our industrial base to get more industrial income. So our town is all on property tax. Some of you maybe recall those discussions years ago. So I would just like to ask the Selectmen, where do we stand on that? Trying to relieve our property taxes with more business. Hal, you and I had talked about that 20 years ago, selling donuts, but...
Let me take a crack at that because that was one thing, quite frankly, that I had hoped to do something for the town because I do, sort of in my profession, do those economic development things. And I'm very, I can give you some reasons is most of the property that's suitable for development is not in the hands of people that want to bring business to those sites. For example, there's 600 or 700 acres that are owned in one section of the town that we had some interest in, but the owner just likes to walk his dog on the property and was, didn't want to talk about selling. So unfortunately, we don't have the good land to be developed in the hands of people that are willing to put a few bucks in. So it's been frustrating. We've had a few minor successes. We brought over the envelope company over to Douglas, but it's been a disappointment. Part of it is geography. The real estate depression slowed out things in the middle of the 2008, 2009. But that obviously is the answer, and it's a shame because most of the people in the town are very supportive of economic development and industrially-owned property does not really affect the residential property. So we have all that going for it, we have a very pro-business attitude. But combination of geography and having the land in relatively weak hands, that's not interested immediately in developing it, has been a problem. I'd like to get some leads or suggestions. We have a new member of our Economic Development Commission back there, so...
Building on that, our prime economic development area currently is still a mountain, right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is there any mechanism for re-appropriating some of that state-owned land back to the town? Can I take it back from them?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, no.
Nope.
Has anyone ever tried?
It'd be... No.
Just, that's probably too current an answer. The way the law works is like the law of gravity. What comes up from on high tends to roll down. We at the bottom don't get to roll on...
That's not true at all. The way the law works is you go in, you have a good idea, you vote on it, it gets voted, things change, right?
It all depends on which level you're voting.
I admire optimism, though.
A lot of people tell me what I can't do.
No, nobody does. All right, so, guys, I think we need to move along and decide if we're going to put a motion together. Are we going to put this on the ballot? If so, how, when, where?
My feeling is that if we can make the timeline work, and it sounds like we can, we should probably try to put it on the ballot for the... I think that would be ideal unless there's some kind of reason we shouldn't allow it.
Well, I think it makes sense because we're sitting here discussing a budget crisis and then talking about the cost of having to run a special election. I don't care for that myself. Yes, sir.
Yes, Frank Santino, South East Main Street. Order of the town census has come in to how many people have retired in the town that you're forcing a tax increase on.
Well, we're not forcing...
What's the percentage of senior citizens in Douglas?
I...
Taxpayer for 40 years, children that I sent to Ollie in the valley, always out of my pocket.
Well, I'd love to answer your question if I can now.
Yes, thank you.
So we're not forcing a tax decision down your throat, you're getting the opportunity. We're not the legislative body. We're proposing two choices on a budget, saying, "If we'd like to continue level services, this is what Budget A looks like. If we don't want to vote for a two-and-a-half override, which everybody's inclined to vote no, if that's what they choose to do, then this is what town services look like." So I don't feel that it's being forced down anyone's throat, it's the will of the town. As for the amount of senior citizens, do we have census data in?
2017 is the town report right now.
No, but is it even in there?
I don't know if it's broken down by...
Age bracket?
Age bracket.
Or occupation.
Right.
I believe the application said ages.
But in the town report, we don't break it out and report it as like age group or anything.
I'll look into it, though. I'm happy to...
Appreciate it, yeah.
Yeah.
Because a lot of the seniors, they got to raise.
It's not an easy choice. I mean, you know, you've got to fix income, you've got social security, maybe a pension, and then you've got to pay $450 more a year, okay?
You're going to sit over here from now on, Gene.
No, it is, it is.
I do.
So Gene has that.
My belt in Douglas before, he is.
So the town has to complete a continuing disclosure, so there is some analytical information in here. And according to this report, in the town of Douglas, there's a total of 8,665. 65 years older is 906, 20 years to 64 years is 5,327, 5 years to 19 years is 2,138, and under 5 years is 294. And this was a source from the U.S. Department of Commerce, 2016.
So it's the American Community Survey, which I was trying to pull up.
So pre-retirement age is the majority of the community?
Who would have thought?
Are those numbers for winter residents or summer residents?
That I can't answer.
Because I've heard this town increases double the amount of residents that's listed in the town due to summer recreation, camping, second homes, things like that.
I don't think we go up to 16,000, but...
There would be residents, I don't think.
All right, boys.
So we have one mission, to try to organize and give the voters a chance on the override. I think that's something we can do.
I think we're pretty much in agreement that we're in favor of doing that. So I'll make a motion to put two-and-a-half override on the ballot for 1.5 billion dollars.
I will second.
Okay, that was made by Mike and seconded by Dave. Is there any further discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I am, at this moment, emailing to the town administrator a sample ballot question for your use as well as a sample motion for the board to make because there will be very specific language that you will want to include in the ballot question. So that should be in your inbox right now.
So this would be for the actual question? We have to approve that word for word?
Yes.
Okay, is, do we have to do that tonight, or...
No, but you will have to do it, I would say, probably at your next meeting.
But this vote tonight gives...
Direction.
Direction. And the town clerk can move forward.
Yes, and I wouldn't have...
Making the necessary steps to make sure it gets on the ballot.
Yes, and I wouldn't have sent this if you hadn't voted yes. Fine.
Any more action on the budget for you, or are you good?
Well, if, maybe after this long conversation, maybe letting this lie, you should still meet next Wednesday.
Okay.
And what we want there is guidance from the board in the event the override should fail. What would be the remaining assumptions around the big items, COLA, STEPS, and the other policy choices that are inherent in that austerity budget?
Okay.
So directing the administration to give effect to closure of the library, health insurance changes, other things.
So we can have that discussion that are, are we meeting next Wednesday?
Yes.
I didn't have that either.
I did send out an email.
I haven't.
Yep.
So I think the last time you guys, you were setting up your schedule, you were going to meet, discuss the budget in your regular business meetings on Tuesdays, every other Tuesday. In the intervening weeks, you would meet on Wednesday when FinCom is here on Tuesdays. So next week, FinCom is actually here Monday and Tuesday, and we had you on the schedule to meet for a budget workshop.
That's fine, I just thought that the Wednesday was just because of FinCom's meeting, the last time we met. Thursday, we didn't meet on Tuesday anyway, but...
I thought the directive was to schedule those meetings until the warrant was closed and signed by the board.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I just...
All right. Is Thursday available as a possibility? Because I'm going to have trouble with Wednesday.
I may have trouble with Wednesday as well.
Are you available Thursday if we do it?
I am available at your backing call...
Oh, boy.
As you guys need me.
How about you guys?
Thursday, the...
Next Tuesday.
29.
I would prefer Thursday, not this day.
I'm only agreeing to Thursday because Hal asked.
No, my compatriot tomorrow.
I'll say yes.
Yes.
All right.
What is the one he's talking about?
Are you okay, Mike, with moving it to that Thursday?
Wait a minute, where are we at now?
Tuesday, 29.
No, my appointments are in there.
Say it again, from, I apologize.
From Wednesday to Thursday.
Siri, is Mike Hughes available? All right.
To the 29?
Yeah.
Instead of the 21st?
No, instead of the 28th.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I can do that, all right, that gets us...
Yep.
All right.
Are we good now?
Well, I don't want to belabor this too much, and I don't want to put School Committee member Brett Argul on the hook here, but you just walked in, we did vote to authorize a one-and-a-half override. And I would just urge the school folks and the library folks to work in unison and organize quickly because it's going to happen quick.
Yep. It's like I said, it's, we're not trying to do, save as many services as we can instead of trying to get specialized on it. I mean, like I said, we're one community, so we're either going to succeed or fail together. So we all know what we've got to do, right?
What's the date of that, if it does go with the main election, what is that date referring to?
May 8.
May 8.
Town meeting is May 8.
Okay. So first look at annual appointments.
Oh, I lied, I wasn't done.
Oh, wait a minute, we had that one other issue there.
Oh.
Private roads.
Private roads, yes.
How can we forget, Richard? So the warrant includes an article asking the people of the town to vote for a general bylaw amendment. And, I mean, want to let people go, or?
Sure.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Yeah.
I agree with that. Always an A game. Thank you for coming. It's a pleasure to look out and actually see people in subsection.
All right, so getting back to that, the town meeting warrant will include an article that suggests a general bylaw amendment with respect to private roads and the ability of the town to be involved in the maintenance of those roads. What we've been through in the last five or six weeks is a period of time where we've tried to actually enforce the law the way it's written and the way the council of the town has advised us to operate, really consistently for as long as I can find memos in the file. Town lawyers have advised the town not to be involved in the maintenance of private roads and that the only way a private road could be maintained is by a petition of the people who live on that road and an allocation of the costs. In enforcing that or complying with that legal advice, we have one issue, which is if a roadway is so bad that we can't get an ambulance in there or a police cruiser, well, we've got to do something, we've got to open it up for public safety. The contradiction occurs when you realize that for cost purposes, the most cost-effective thing to do is to maintain the road with small repairs over time rather than wait for it to get so bad that nobody can drive on it and then try to fix it then. It's just more effort, more material, more aggravation. Our neighbor to the north, Sutton, dealt with this issue in 2014 with a general bylaw amendment that's now Bylaw 20 in their books. The town will engage, if passed, if the amendment is passed, the town will have the authority to engage in minor repairs, that's grading, small pothole fixes, without incurring the liability of being on that private road and having that go awry. If there are very major repairs that need to be done, there's still a petition process. The town can't do it without authority, but the authority is issued by the Board of Selectmen and not town meeting. So we're not making it so difficult for people who live on these roads to get some form of relief. They can petition at any time, they can petition the Board of Selectmen to fix a culvert or other significant structural element of a road, and they do still, there is still an allocation process for that. It's a pretty good bylaw, it was well-written, it was passed by Sutton Town Meeting and approved by the Massachusetts Attorney General as it is written. We had a couple of small amendments. We want to make sure that the way Douglas has approached this is still preserved. So the owners of an estate must all sign the petition for that vote to count. And the hope is that, what was John's amendment?
Not cutting brush.
Not cutting the brush.
Right.
We're not going to get involved in that kind of work, we're just going to keep the roadway open. So that's on there. Do we need the board to vote to put that on the warrant? Or is it just, I think we do because there is no act of petition. We had two attempts at a petition and they both got completely scrambled.
They went sideways, huh?
We had people signing multiple different versions of the petition, and about half of them came in after the deadline. So we're trying to provide people with relief, but they, nothing could get organized enough to accomplish that. On the Parker Road petition, they were trying to do something very extraordinary. They were actually trying to get town meeting to waive the bylaw so that people who don't live on Parker Road could vote for and approve and pay for paving on one road that they don't live on. And that just, that failed for the same reason. After you actually, after the town clerk did the analysis, they didn't have enough votes on Parker Road for that petition to be successful. The problem with that is, in American democracy, we're trying to give people access to relief, and our process actually made it very difficult for people to get relief. So that the bylaw out of the Sutton example gets you past all of those problems. You said as road commissioners anyway, so, you know, it's kind of in your wheelhouse to know the roads of the town and have an opinion. I've been out driving them, and they really have, a couple of them have gotten truly awful before we've had a chance to fix them. But I drive a Corolla, so I'm a little bit of a spoiled, you know, I'm very sensitive to bumps in the road. But I've been to quite a few of them, and this is the most logical way to proceed from my point of view.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to solve, Tiel, just out of curiosity, either how many roads or how many miles of roads are private in Douglas? And the second question is, does that include, do you also have to have snow removal as well?
So the town voted to provide, town meeting in Douglas voted to provide snow plowing services to private roads many, many years ago. And I think the research was, it was 1964 when this town did that. So that's off the... So that's off the table. We're going to plow the roads regardless of they're private or public. And I wish John were here, but maybe the chief knows, one of the chiefs. I think we have eighty miles of accepted public road and as many as forty miles of private roads.
I think John says a delivery of seventy-five miles of road to get.
Total, yeah. And I know it's eighty public, so.
What's the difference between accepted and, and private? What's the difference?
Typically, that, there are no standards in place for private roads. So there's no base, you know, it can be just a dirt cart path that got a little bit wider and culverts were thrown in without, you know, extensive engineering work. To build a public way in the town of Douglas, in most towns, is a very significant set of, you know, there's base coat requirements, top coat requirements, stormwater management requirements.
Engineering, yeah.
It's a million dollars a mile.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's, the, the only thing I would, we'll talk about this at Town Meeting, but a past highway superintendent and other town officials did in fact maintain private roads for a very long time in this town without the proper authorization. So the only positive thing about that is, we're not taking on a new expense. You've already been doing it, so it's now a question only of the legal authority to properly be there. So if something bad happens, we don't have the liability heaped back on us.
But are we liable anyway? Because we've been doing it and therefore would they, would the court say, well, you've been doing it, you've accepted it, therefore regardless of what people are?
Well, well, Rich will help me out with this, but I think there's a case where you still end up sharing the liability with the private owners of the road, but there is some problem that comes back to the town. It's expo, unnecessary exposure.
Yeah. With your permission, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
The, what the law says is that if you've, that question's already been addressed by the court, and the court has said, well, just because you did it wrong for a whole bunch of years doesn't mean you have to keep doing it wrong. The, the legislature has said how it has to be done, and I never like to say this, but, you know, we weren't following the law. But the law also tells you, there is a way to do it the right way, and I think that's what we're trying to do now.
Yes, sir. Please.
Willie Swenson, Northwest Main Street. My question about private roads, does Massachusetts mandate to towns that a town has to? Is a town obligated or lawfully required by the state to maintain private roads?
Just the opposite, yeah. Mr. Chairman, it, it's exactly the opposite. The way the law is written, it positively discourages towns from maintaining private roads because the way the law is written, private roads are private property. You know, technically, the, the town doesn't even have a right to be on a private road to do anything. Technically, the town is a trespasser. And so that's why there's a whole process in place that if Town Meeting approves, it allows the town to come in, take care of things with the understanding of the owners of the road, that, hey, if something goes wrong, if you get a flat tire, if you break an axle on a pothole, you know, hey, this is your private property. We came in and we did what we could.
But so, I, I've had to help people with this, so I, I don't take anything for granted. Everybody's got the same tax rate. So the, and the valuations are not altered by the fact that you're on a private road or public road. So you could, in, in one particular intersection in this town, own the exact same house, one of which fronts on Orange Street, which is public road, and the other which Orange, is on Perry Street Extension, which is a private road, you would have the same valuation, you'd pay the same taxes. So when you call 911 if you're on a private road, my personal feeling is you have every right to expect the ambulance is going to come and be able to get to you, because you do pay taxes, you pay the same taxes as everybody else.
The town is between a rock and a hard place right now.
Yeah.
So I just say, yeah, when things are good, things are good. Everybody's happy. Things turn a little way, a lot of people get unhappy at different times. But when things turn around again, everybody can be happy again.
Well, like I say, the town has done this improperly already. Your, your budget reflects that.
I've worked in this town for seventy-one years, so I understand a lot of things weren't done correctly, but they were done.
Yeah.
So sometimes you have to live with it, sometimes you have to cut the road.
Can't argue that.
That's true.
I can guarantee you'll never have a hundred percent of the people happy, ever. All right, so you need a motion?
I don't know that we.
Well, sure, why not?
To put it on, it would feel procedurally correct or clean to have it on the warrant with your vote.
So I'll move that we put the use of private way by law on the warrant.
Second. Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any additional discussion?
Just a procedure question. Couldn't it have just been put on this when we vote on the, the warrant itself?
Yeah.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Now it's our first look at annual appointments. Suzanne?
It's your first look at annual appointments. On the packet is the listing, in yellow are the terms that are up. I will be sending letters out, asking everyone if they want to be considered for reappointment. I will also be asking the boards if they support the appointments, and then I will bring them to you in the NMA.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So let's move on to the March 6, 2018 minutes.
I wonder if Mr. Selectman Cortez would be interested in serving as the, um, delegate.
You are doing a fine job, I'm going to leave you right there.
We always hold off on that appointment until there's a select but not present when it's time to discuss.
Are you guys talking about CMRPC?
Yes. You're being a little premature in making a.
A U N day appointment, too.
It's not going to take that long this year either, as it has in the town.
So I, I move that we approve the March 6, 2018, what is left in the minutes?
Second. Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Your report, Mr. Administrator.
We are over again with snow and ice. So as of February 22nd, provided you with notice that our approved cap had gone to three hundred thousand, we have exceeded that with purchase of supplies. So we've set the new authorization for snow and ice at three hundred and fifty thousand, which is a hundred and sixty-five thousand more than was originally budgeted in the account. It has been a very bad winter.
And two more nor'easters coming.
And two more coming in your account. I, I do think that John has provided you with a pretty good sense of where all the runs have been. The aggravating thing is that there, we, we think about the big storms, but there's been a lot of small ones, where he's had to go out once and that interest used resources to do it. The second thing that I have for you is that the so-called Blackstone Complex, which is all the aforementioned state forests and parks here in the Blackstone Valley, DCR is having a resource management plan meeting on Wednesday, March 28th, at the Bellingham Public Library to discuss the planning associated with the parks, which includes Douglas State Forest, the Southern New England Trunk Line Trail, which they hope to bring through town, and then all of our surrounding communities, Upton State Forest, Sutton, and the Blackstone River, Greenway. We're going to try to have some kind of presence there because I think we have an ongoing running issue with them around forestry management, and what are they going to do for us if the whole place is a tinderbox with all the trees that are down after this horrible winter? So that's something the public, if you're interested in, you can go to. And then I had one other thing that Mr. Bowen would like to give you an update on a case and.
Oh, which, thank you, man. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just on a real estate matter that you had directed me to work on, I had been in touch with the other party of the transaction and heard nothing back, but pursuant to your prior directive, I'm working on, or I will be working on certain transactional documents that I'll be presenting to the board in the near future for your review.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So it brings us to any old business?
Last week, I think it was, we discussed calling for an audience with the governor. Just wanted to kind of get an update on where we are with that.
I can say I sent him a couple of emails and actually requested him and Lieutenant Governor's presence, presence at this evening's meeting. I was given a respectful decline due to scheduling issues. I was referred over to Secretary Beaton, or Commissioner Beaton's office. I then invited the governor, Lieutenant Governor, and Mr. Beaton to our FinCom meetings that are scheduled. I have not heard back on those. I also asked Senator Fatman and State Rep McKenna to echo the sentiments that their presence would be greatly appreciated. Hey, thanks.
Thank you.
Any new business? Seeing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'm a second.
Made by Mike, seconded by Dave. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.